Okay, this is the town of Berlin. Zoning Board of Appeals.
Tony, can I put your mic on?
This is the town of Berlin zoning Board of Appeals for January twenty eighth, seven oh five or seven oh eight P M. Berlin zoning Board of Appeals will hold a public hearing at regular meeting to be held on Tuesday, January twenty eighth. We've got two items on the agenda. Okay, and basically what we do is we listen to the agenda items as they're received. So I'll go back and I'll read each agenda item. We'll go into a new business, read the agenda items. We'll have a discussion on each item. You're invited to come up, sign your name. And you have a microphone over there. And you could use the microphone to explain your application for the appeal. And then what we'll do is we'll close the hearing on the application. We'll close the hearing on the application. And after we close the hearing on the application, we'll go into old business and vote on the applications that we heard during the new business portion of the meeting. So it's two parts, new business, old business, and listen to the applications and then go into the second part. We cannot introduce any new information during the second part of the meeting. So anything that has to be said or given, information that has to be given out has to be done during the first part of the meeting. We can't introduce anything new during the second part legally, so we're constrained in that. And then we also have an issue now where we have, normally we have five people and we have two alternates. And tonight we've got only four people. We can run a meeting with four people, but requires a vote, I think, of of all four to approve an application. I don't think we have any big issues here, but if you want to retract your application and vote to the next, wait till the following month to have a hearing, you can do that as well if you're, if you like that. But I don't see, I don't see, I, I, I'm not the judge of it. I don't see any issues here, but that still remains to be seen after we hear the applications. Anyway, does anybody have any questions regarding tonight's meeting? Okay, I'm just gonna get started. First application is Z B A twenty twenty five dash oh one, eight forty one Berlin Turnpike, map ten dash four, block one fifty eight, lot fourteen. Nick Gara, Eastern Ventura Ventures is requesting a sales of alcoholic beverages location approval for non premises restaurant liquor permit for Striker Sports Cafe per Berlin zoning regulation eleven B. Property is located within the C C D one zone, speaking for the application. Nick, please come on up. These are very sensitive tonight.
Are you being serious? There was?
Oh, tax auction?
I'm sure they did.
Oh. What's the tax auction? Really?
Yeah.
Sold. Wow. Hello? There you go.
Hi, my name is Nick Gora, and I've submitted an application for a liquor permit for the property at eight forty one Berlin Turn, Berlin Turnpike in Berlin, Connecticut, operating under the name Strikers Sports Bar and Grill. And I have completed my application. I notified everybody, all the residents within the vicinity of the property, in addition to getting all my application materials. So and so, yeah, I'm formally requesting a liquor permit from the, from the, from the town and zoning.
What are your hours gonna be?
As of right now, we're looking at, during the weekday, probably between noon and ten o'clock on the weekends, more likely noon till midnight. And when I say weekends, Friday and Saturday night.
Any liquor permit for all kinds of liquor, I guess, right?
Yes.
Is there any entertainment at the property?
Yes, there will be a different, there will be a live music in addition to likely other forms of entertainment, including karaoke as well.
Where are these, where, where is the live music gonna take place?
Um, inside the restaurant.
Won't be outside on the patio?
Uh, no.
No karaoke outside on the patio?
No.
So basically, it sounds like you're continuing what was there before.
Essentially, we are definitely gonna make some changes in terms of, in terms of just kind of the menu and in terms of marketing.
When did you take it over?
So I essentially took it over in the past, what was it, the date? The past month, about a month ago.
Okay. What, what happened with the, the past owner?
Yeah, so.
Oh, they just?
So do you want me to give a little background?
Yeah.
Okay, cool.
Sure.
So the, yeah, the business operated essentially for, from my understanding, operated for close to roughly around thirty years under the initial owner, whose name is Mark McChad. He then sold it to another individual, from my understanding, about a, about like a year, a year and a half ago. And that individual operated the business for, my understanding, for about a year, year and a half and essentially was uh, did, did not pay, fell behind on rent and as a result, he was removed from the premises and the owners of the building took it over.
Oh. It's a cross from Mickey Finn's.
Yeah, I know where it is.
Uh, Zingarelli Enterprises LLC.
Need a letter of?
Oh, there should be one there in the package.
Yeah, I think there is one.
Arlene, right?
Yep.
Yeah.
Charlene and her sister are partners in the LLC.
We've been, we've been pretty fortunate that we don't have any quote, quote, buckets of blood bars and around town. And the only thing that we're trying to guard against is making sure that, that it doesn't turn into a, you know, problem situation where the neighbors around the area start to complain and raise hell. And, you know, it wasn't like that in the past. And I don't expect it to be like that in the future, but if it, if it gets like that, then, you know, maybe we have to take some, some other action. But that's, that's, that's just, you know, just upfront information. But I mean, I don't have any other issues. I, I think that.
I've got a question about, on the liquor permit application, you had checked off disc jockeys. And we had a situation last year with a restaurant that wanted to have music. And then they came back saying they didn't know what they checked off. When you guys check off DJs, are you guys planning on doing DJ nights? Are you guys trying to do, like, what's? I mean, obviously, that, when we caught it online, they had to come back here. And now they're a closed facility. So, I mean, we certainly don't want businesses to fail in town, but at the same time, it's like, you just gotta be upfront and honest with us.
Oh, yeah, I, I apologize. I'm, yeah, so that one's not set in stone yet, but potentially we were considering having a, potentially having a DJ night or events with the DJ. I apologize for that.
I don't know, nor.
But the, the primary entertainment, though, is there's definitely, I can definitely assure you, there definitely will be live music in terms of bands and things of that nature. And the other items I checked off, and I apologize, I'm sorry, the DJ aspect escaped my memory. Those are things we're just at the moment considering.
Yeah. And the reason why I bring that up was because, like I said, we had an incident last year with it. And, you know, it's just a matter of just, you know, coming forward, especially when it comes to liquor license.
Of course.
Okay. Any more questions? Okay. Staff comments?
Oh, I'll only make one comment. The reason why we have to revisit this application, this business, is because they seize operation for more than thirty days. No, I have to restart the process for a location approval.
Right.
They were only seized for a week or try to switch hands, can sign off that from staff.
So the previous owner could have handed off the liquor license to him, is that what you're saying?
At the time of taking out the previous tenant, they could have found someone in that.
Okay, gotcha.
In a month and got them in, but.
But it took longer.
It took longer.
Okay. Yep, okay.
Also, part of our process is to ask for public comments and opposition, public comments in favor of the application. I don't see any public hearing, I don't see any public online that I know of. But I will ask for any public comments in favor or in opposition to the application. If anybody has any comments, please speak now. Well, you know, having heard that, then I'll make a motion to close the hearing on the application.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay, thank you.
Thank you.
And our next application is Z B A twenty twenty five dash oh two, fourteen oh six Chamberlain Highway, map nineteen dash four, block fifteen, lot fourteen A. Tomas Ostinsky, is that right? Tops Garage LLC is requesting a variance to allow a five foot, ten inch fence to be installed within the front yard setback at the south side of the property, and a four foot fence to be installed within the front yard setback at the north side of the property. When three feet is the max lot height for fences installed within the front yard setback in residential zones for Berlin zoning regulation four B seven. Property is located within an R eighty six zone, speaking for the application.
Lucas Zagrebny, general manager of Tops Garage. Thomas Tinsky is the owner of the building. The audience.
Yeah, you're good to go.
Yeah, we're here because we need a variance for a fence, as you saw in the site plans. We wanted to put a fence on the right side of the property, which is actually a four foot fence, because there's a retaining wall. But it's basically, that's, that's like a safety issue, so nobody falls over, drives past the, past the curb there and goes over the wall. So we want to put that there. So again, that's a four foot fence on the right side, and then on the left side of the building, which is the six foot fence, five foot eleven, I think it was exactly. And that's, we want to close that off just because it's gonna be, again, it's, it's a safety issue as far as, maybe not safety, but, you know, we've had the place robbed before. And if any of our customers leave a car overnight that we can't keep inside the building, we'd rather have it fenced off and keep it behind, behind the fence. And this isn't gonna be like an ordinary fence, so we're, we have it, we have it planned out to be a nice looking fence. Iron fence, wrought iron, custom made and stuff. So it's gonna be actually attractive or not, or just something throw there. The other thing is, we're gonna do it around, so the neighbors won't see the cars or anything like that, so. Or anything else that we, that we put there for safety.
Do we have a location approval on this property?
Oh, so, question I have, you said customers coming in, but there hasn't been approved use since the last tenant.
What are you, say that again?
There hasn't been any approved use since the last tenant that picked up.
Yeah, for the, the last guy that got kicked out.
Yeah.
So for the future, again, or like when we open up a garage or something, we want that fenced off.
Okay, because you mentioned it, like it's current time that.
No, no, we're not doing anything there now. Okay, no, it's not current, there's no garage there now. We've been cleaning up the place, I'm, I'm sure everybody saw driving by. We've been cleaning up the place and making it look a lot better than what it was for all these years that it's been there. Yeah, we did the.
The last guy cleaned it up too.
Which guy?
He cleaned house on a bunch of customers.
The, yeah, yeah, the last, yeah. Cleaning up after him, for sure.
We go with what, on the town line, I think you call?
Online, yeah, that's what it was, yeah.
Oh, okay.
This is, that was a tenant, this is the owner actually doing the work to the whole building.
So there's no proposed site plan yet for the, for garage or whatever?
I think so, no, we only have the site plan for the fence, correct? Fencing.
So I can't ask you how many cars you're putting in there? I guess, I'm just thinking of.
I know we talked about that at the zoning when Maureen was there.
Yep, so, but pretty much here, what you're asking for is variance to the fence height. The site plan will still have to be approved by P and a planning zoning commission. I mean, they're gonna ask the same questions about potential uses and occupancy of the property, so.
It's a six foot fence, we're over the, we're, we're, it's a, it's a non conforming building, existing non conforming buildings, we're not allowed to put a six foot fence. I mean, that's the big issue, right? The, the six foot.
Yeah, but you're only asking five, ten and four feet, right?
Yep, five, ten and four feet on the right side.
Where, where's this fence going on this property?
I'll show you here, just, it's not red on the screen map. The map that you have should be highlighted in red.
I see that here.
Yeah, that's Chamberlain Highway right there.
There is a drop off over here quite a bit. It doesn't require a five foot, ten inch fence to stop him from going over the drop off? No.
Oh, the right, that's why we have the. On the right side, we have the four foot fence. On the left side, just to keep it consistent, we did six fourteen.
That's right here.
Yeah, I know the property well. Actually, seventy two feet by forty feet.
Yeah, I'll see.
Seventy two by forty.
Twenty feet is the gate.
No, they're doing one here, so they want to do the four foot, four foot fence on this side. And then five, ten one on this side, where the, see how the guardrail is behind? Yeah, so it would. So I've got a question for you. If they're, if they're doing this fencing before they go for a DMV license, does that matter? I mean, if they're, if they're, obviously, they're doing this as a garage and to do service, they obviously gotta get a DMV license, because we don't have one for this location.
Mm-hmm. So we, there'll be a automobile, automobile use license or another use that would fit the property. Still have to go to P and Z for the site plan approval. You guys would just approve, deny a fence to be higher than much required? Three feet, because the entirety of the property is in the front yard setback.
Right.
You see the setback, the building line in the back, it says seventy five B L? That's the whole front set, front yard setback for this zone.
Oh, my God.
Yeah. The entirety of the property is in the front yard. Exactly, yeah, well, the whole, the whole property, the whole lot. The planning and zoning will have to approve any use, and even this site plan to be approved, they could, essentially, you could deny or approve fence height, but then.
It's still gotta go to zoning.
Get the, to get the fence location approved, because there might be some parking that is impinging.
Oh, okay.
Are, are you not putting the cart before the horse?
So.
Are you not, are you not putting the cart before the horse? In other words, are you, you're doing this, and what if the planning and zoning doesn't approve? I'm just saying, what if the planning and zoning doesn't approve the, the location, give you a location approval for a garage? Then the fence, you get the approval for the fence, it sounds like a moot point. It seems like you should get the approval for the garage first and then get the fence.
It's not something that we need right now. We have, we have used it as storage for personal use, personal vehicles, not fixing any other vehicles or anything like that. Inside, again, if we want to keep anything outside, rather have it fenced off until we get to that point where we need a license or actually fix other people's vehicles, if it even comes to that point. Still debating on what it's gonna be, maybe somebody's gonna rent out the place, as if we do all this work that we're doing to it, it's a lot easier to rent out this place and whatever the next guy wants to do, if it, hopefully not a town line guy like the other guy was, but you know, it's a lot easier to lease something that's, that looks a lot better, looks good, and, you know, stuff is fenced off. And if they do think of, you know, putting up a, opening up a garage, then at least some of it is gonna be fenced off and cars overnight are secured.
You're not planning on starting any junk cars in there, are you?
We don't do that. Not our thing.
Toad cars? Well, if another shop goes in there, that'd be an ideal place to put stone, toad cars. That's obvious.
Yeah, behind the fence, I guess, yeah.
Well, it provides a little privacy and gives a little bit of a. Putting it right on the road, Tony. Huh? Putting it right on the road.
Going along the building line.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, the fence will be right over there, right in that area, where that.
On the, the front, front wall of the building.
Is that right there?
Along that.
Is that a road or is that someone's driveway?
It's a driveway to the.
That's a, that's Tony's driveway.
Tony.
Tony McGotch. Oh, that's my cousin. Is it really?
Yeah. Great guy.
So does the fence go to the end of the driveway or does it continue to go on the grass where that boat is?
It's probably gone right to the end of the property, which is seventy two feet, seventy two feet, it's right, it's right.
Doesn't that get right to, to his driveway entrance?
Yes. It's, see that manhole over there?
Yep.
That's probably his property, or his property starts over there somewhere, probably, I, I'm not sure, but that manhole is probably, you know, seventy two feet. If this building, the, the building itself is eighty six feet, the building is eighty six feet, so if you want to gauge yourself, look at this front of the building. The front of the building is eighty six feet. Okay, so it's almost the size of the building.
Yep.
Right next to it. Seventy two feet, whereas opposed to eighty six feet, it's fourteen feet shorter.
Well, I'm just saying, like, if you look.
Same as the building.
Wouldn't be one, yeah, but pretty much because it's all in the front yard setback, it'd be the same. The map shows.
It doesn't, doesn't go uphill. Doesn't go up on the, on, to his property, onto.
No, but isn't there supposed to be a buffer between that driveway entrance to the corner?
Well, here's the telephone pole, okay? Go back to your picture, this is the telephone pole. Okay, seventy two feet, this telephone pole is probably on, on the, a butter's property, because the mailbox is right next to it.
Yep.
Okay, so if you go back seventy two feet, where's the other picture? The other, you still have it?
Street view.
Uh, street view, yeah, there's the telephone pole.
Yep.
Okay, now, go, go, go that way. Okay? No, the other way. The other, the other left. Yeah, okay, now, that building is eighty six feet.
Yep.
And if you put seventy two feet, you're gonna wind up right over on the grass somewhere, probably.
Right about where the, the asphalt.
Yeah, right about there. Okay, well, that's your seventy two feet.
But I was just talking about the depth of it.
Oh, it's, it's the same as the building.
No, but I'm just saying, though, like, if you're going to this forty feet, which is to the building, isn't that literally right on the edge of the driveway, though?
Pretty much.
So then, isn't that?
The back corner.
Yeah, I'm talking about the neighbor's driveway.
Yeah.
No, because that's going all the way past the building, though, they're proposing it.
It's not starting at the road, starting at the building.
Right, but I'm just saying, though, like, it's past the building according to the plans. And I'm talking about, this is a perfect square, it's forty by seventy two.
Right.
I see what you're saying.
So the forty depth is gonna go past the driveway, if you go back to the picture.
Right, because the building is only thirty feet.
Right, so if it's going forty, it's going into the grass and that driveway curves, isn't it gonna like be, you know, feet away from the driveway now?
Very, very close, that's for sure.
Right there, where you're pointing is where it's gonna be, so.
Right, right.
About fifteen or ten.
Yeah, because it's past the driveway, it's past the building in order for it, because the building is thirty feet.
It'd be ten feet past the back of the building.
Right, and so that's gotta be pretty darned close to his driveway entrance. Yeah. So then what's, how many feet does that fence need to be from the neighbor's driveway?
Doesn't have to be any feet away.
It doesn't?
No, not for the fences. Only thing that would come into play, the sight line issue at the roadside.
Still quite a ways away from the actual driveway. We have the stone down there that we leveled out, so we know where exactly it's gonna end and stuff, so. Quite a ways away.
Four room back there that you're seeing, you know what I mean?
That just looks like it on the Google view, wide angle. You could do a top. Satellite.
So whatever we do, it's still gotta go to zoning, correct? So we could say either yea or nay, if we say yea, and it's still gotta go to zoning, and they could say like, you know, tough cookies, it's, doesn't meet our requirements.
Yeah, but I mean, most likely, they want to see one of the updated plans that show the parking for the previous use, because they want to make sure it doesn't impact.
I, I'm inclined to table it and have them go to zoning. Because. This with the last people coming into that property, with parking on that property, and how many vehicles we're gonna allow on that property.
Yep.
If you put on, if you allow them to put that big of an area on that property, we're gonna go over the amount of cars that we were, we allowed on that property. If you look at that, the.
Previous plan.
Previous plan.
Might be one in here, file.
Yeah, like I said, I'm inclined, I'm inclined to, you know.
It's a wrought iron fence, so it's not.
Well, it's privacy. The point is, the point is. Privacy, it's gonna be. So we made the approval for that other property, for that other repair shop.
And a twenty three or?
There about cars, how many cars he was allowed to have on that property?
We're here today not to talk about that, we're talking about just the height, correct? Was that, is that what we filed for? Just the height of the actual fence, can we do a six foot fence?
What year was the previous application?
That whole thing is gonna be a six foot fence, and over here is gonna be a four foot fence, right?
Right, yes.
Yep. Five, ten. Five foot ten.
Five, five foot ten.
Six foot. For all argument's sake. All six foot and five foot ten.
For the sake of the variance. Was the previous application in twenty three or twenty two, do you know?
I think it's twenty two.
It was twenty.
Well, it could have been twenty. I was thinking it was twenty one.
Twenty one, okay.
Twenty-one, okay. The other application?
I had the car just.
Twenty-one, same night I was doing my, my house. I remember. Twenty-one, twenty-two.
Twenty-one or twenty-two?
Twenty-two. Twenty-two, cuz I bought my house in December twenty-one. I was here for variance, so, oh, April, I think. So it was twenty-two.
I'm still not understanding. If you're gonna use it for a garage, and that's the intent to use it for a garage, for a repair way, don't you go to planning and zoning first before coming here?
We don't know at the moment. We're, we're just here for the six-foot fence. Past that is, is another issue. If we, yeah, I mean, we've been cleaning the whole place, just making it look right. We wanna fence that area off, again, the safety on the right side, so we wanna put up, you know, a four foot, because there's a retaining wall. On the left side, there's also a retaining wall, so we wanna protect that too.
What's the, what's the plan for the property, though? That's what I'm getting at. What's the plan for the property?
Right now, to clean it up and if we don't lease it to somebody that's gonna like this property the way it is now.
Yeah.
And whatever they do, they do, then we'll think of something else to do with it and. We own businesses, we could do other stuff. I mean, we're not mechanics, so we're not gonna do mechanic work.
I, I.
But if we do it, then we'll do, we'll go to zoning and fill out whatever we need for that and do another variance or whatever. I mean. We didn't think it was gonna be an issue putting up a six-foot fence or five-foot ten, uh, just because there's other ones around the property. Other properties have it, you know, just down the road, the corner property orchard, they just did a variance for theirs and it wasn't an issue and it looks like they're much closer to the road. Um.
Where's that?
Uh, Orchard and Chamberlain, just down the, uh.
Oh, that was the house of the, the corner.
Corner lot, yeah.
Corner cape that put the white fence around.
Yeah.
And their.
It's that one.
Their hardship was, uh, they had children and they didn't want the children being able to sneak off the backyard onto the busy road.
Yep.
I remember that. I remember that, yeah.
What?
I remember that.
Yep.
Well, that was a hardship. Uh, it was a hardship. There was a safety issue. What's the hardship over here?
None.
So what's the, wha- what is the, uh, legal amount of fencing they can have?
It's only three feet.
It's only supposed to be three feet.
That's because it's not conforming, um, lot here. In our already, our eighty-six zone.
Okay.
Why is that? Three feet within the seventy-five foot frontage.
Even though it's a commercial lot.
Yeah.
Okay.
Cuz it's not conforming in the zone. The regulations pertain it to the, the zone, not the use.
Okay.
The problem is, is there's no hardship.
Right.
Real, real.
If we tabled this, this would be a, a big issue. I mean, if it's gonna go to planning and zoning to get a discussion on, uh, using it as a garage, when is that gonna happen? If we.
Well, he doesn't know. He's, he's, he has like.
They're trying to set the property.
To make it look right and to make.
And then try to market it to sell or lease.
And we have a fenced-in area. It's secure. It's a busy road. Uh, you know, there's been issues. We've had issues with, you know, being robbed at the place, the, there's a bunch of tools stolen and stuff, so, you know, we start marketing it, you know. We did the floors inside, everything epoxy and stuff, cleaned up the whole inside, so we're trying to market it as nice as possible. Um, so again, you know, if somebody sees potential, you know, garage there and they see a fenced-off area, it's gonna be easier to, uh, lease it out, that's for sure. So essentially, the Planning and Zoning Commission could approve a site plan allowing a fence, just without height exceeding three feet.
Well, you got seventy-two feet by forty feet. How many square feet is that?
Let's do the map.
Yep.
Twenty-eight.
Seventy-two by forty is two thousand eight hundred and eighty square feet.
That's a big area.
A very big area.
Well, four times seven is twenty-eight. I, I, I mean, I, I'm not. But, I mean, the point is, is I guess it's a big area. I mean, ma- you know, maybe, uh, uh, I, I, you know, if you have an issue with this.
It's actually bigger than the building itself.
Yeah, it is. Right, that's why I said fourteen thousand, well, the whole area is fourteen thousand square feet.
Yeah.
The whole area. It's about point three, two acres, but the actual building itself is like three, three by eight, uh, you know. Thirty by eighty-six or thirty by eighty. Twenty-four hundred square feet, something like that, twenty-four, twenty-five hundred square feet, but whatever. The point is, is I guess. You know, I'm looking at this and saying, well, you know, is it, would this be more pal- palatable to everybody if we reduce the size of this thing to forty by forty or forty by thirty or something like that?
Well, also, don't.
I, I got a feeling that, that there's, there's a little bit of resistance here.
Well, I've got, I've got a question for you, Paul. Is, so when we normally, when, when people come in, you know, looking to do fencing, they give us. Germano fencing is proposing, we're gonna do this. Do you guys have that from a fencing company or is this just kind of like? You guys are doing your own fencing?
A company. You were a superb steel.
Okay. Do we have any paperwork from them for what they've already quoted you guys or what they're planning on doing?
It's the owner.
Of the fencing company?
Owner of superb steel, the.
Oh.
Custom make everything and that's gonna be a custom-made fence. And, uh, the, uh, the gate and everything. Maybe we could get your designs of what it's gonna look like.
That's not on us, so that would be zoning, that would be the other part of it.
Oh, okay. So we, we always get the fencing plan when they come.
We don't need the, the ones like.
Well, I'm just saying. Like duck in a row.
Yeah, usually we get a, uh, we get a picture of the fence, but that's not.
Right, that's all I'm saying.
You know?
I need to see what's on the top of the fence. I'm just.
It'll look nice.
Yeah, so it's just that, that extra ten feet, like literally, is gonna be right on top of the driveway. Because the, the, the building is only thirty. It's only thirty feet. They're going ten more feet.
Bottom line, Charlie, there's a, there's no hardship.
There's rules around there if you wanna use it, though.
Using a hardship of safety. What is the safety hardship? He could use a guardrail if he's worried about height driving over a, an area.
No, but he was, he was talking about on that side. This side, he's talking about keeping cars secure. The other side was where he was talking about the drop-off. This side, he was talking about security.
Know there's cars there to secure.
So they're trying to, they're trying to be foresight and just.
I get that.
Yeah.
I get that, but.
My, my concern is that, that.
We are going to appeal.
Right. My concern is that the, uh, the, the actual fenced-in area is almost the same size as the building. And it's, uh, you know, it's almost into the driveway. And also there's, I mean, that, was there a hardship stated on the, on the application?
No, there's no hardship. Were you able to, uh, measure that off? Google. I mean. Yeah. Generally, just remind us that, as, uh, Commissioner Tubbs said. We, we have to talk about the hardship for the variance.
Yep.
Site plan approval is more for P and C for fencing in general, but.
So will they take into account?
Yeah, they'll look at all that.
And of the driveway and everything else like that?
Yeah, for any side.
So basically, all we would be approving is the height of the fence.
Exactly.
This seventy-two by forty.
It'll be the height of fences. They proposed it, 'cause it's here.
Right, no, no, I understand that.
If P and Z were to change it, the location of the fence, then that would be an issue for them with the variance.
But so, so zoning could say like, hey, the seventy-two by forty ain't gonna fly over here. It's gotta be thirty by fifty.
It could, it can impact with original site plan with parking that they had designed there and they can say, oh, you can't block this off or leave it there. So that's just the issue with location of the fence in that sense. Oh, they, they won't, probably won't require that in this chance, but.
You know what I'm talking about.
Yeah, I know.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah. I can't even see.
That's, uh, page three, yeah, yeah, page three.
I think they had it.
Nothing there.
It's probably some email, so, Peter's back.
Yeah, we shouldn't get it.
Yeah, it really is more zoning than us. The, the fact that the matter is, like he said, it's a cart before the horse when. Uh, zoning should be approving what they can put on there and then they should be coming back to us by saying like, uh, we don't wanna put a three-foot fence. We wanna put a five-foot, ten-inch fence. I mean, isn't that essentially what it's supposed to be?
I mean, you could do that process as well.
I suggest we table this and get it back to the Planning and Zoning Commission and let them.
Having a hard, hard time with this. Right on the application, it says reason for hardship and it says required, and we have nothing. And this is our, this is what, this is our, this is what we have to go by.
And I remember that specifically. We were told we could do that later. We're here, so.
You know, somebody will have our butt too, before you have, you know.
I mean.
I generally tell all applicants that you fill it out here, but if you don't, can't fill it out on the form, then you have to state it at the hearing anyway.
Yeah, of course.
Generally, we have to take in any application, even if you sign their name and unfortunately, it'd be a lot more helpful to fill out the entire form.
Can we send this over to Planning and Zoning?
The issue with that would just be, as we open it, we have that thirty-five day limit to close it. And then for P and Z, they'll have to meet all the, um.
Can we table it?
Deadlines.
Not if we, uh.
I mean, you could do, sometimes they do with, without prejudice.
Deny without prejudice?
They can come back and then they can talk about using same funds, the application to go forward with the next one.
Yeah, because this, this seems like zoning has gotta like decide on what this is doing rather than us.
Deny without prejudice, then it, they don't affect, it doesn't.
Don't fail, you can come back.
They can come back and it doesn't hurt these guys at all.
That really should go to zoning to determine where it's supposed to be.
I mean, generally with these, aren't any requirements for fencing with, for height setbacks, just for height, 'cause of the zone now. In commercial zones, it'd be the same case. You can put a fence up to a certain point. There'll be screening anyway.
But then the flip side to it is if this then gets leased to ABC Auto, now their fence is. I mean, like, we, we, we just dealt with on the Berlin Turnpike where their fence is too close to a resident. There's a.
We got a big problem up there.
And like, that's a resident, so wouldn't that be then a foreseeable issue? Because if they're trying to lease it to someone who's gonna turn it into a garage and then be able to store cars there, now that fence line is, that, just looking at forty by that, I, Stevie Wonder could see that's gonna be under ten feet to that, to the, and like, the driveway isn't the property line for whatever that guy's name, Anthony. Whatever his name is.
Uh, McCatchen, yeah.
McCatchen.
The only difference with this one is because of not conforming lot, they can keep the same site plan and standards they had before. But I was trying to pull up the old plan, but I think there were, maybe you guys remember more than me. I think they came before I started. But the, the parking approval had parking along the rear of the property there on the grass and I think a few spots.
I think there was only like eight or ten cars.
I know, exactly. It wasn't many cars, but they had parking approved in the area.
You're putting a forty by seventy-two area in there.
Yeah, that's gotta go.
Forty by seventy-two fenced area in there. They're gonna, if they rent it out, now, I don't know if they're gonna do an auto repair or they're gonna do a, uh, uh, some kind of a contractor or whatever. He's gonna put equipment in there behind there to whatever, whatever they're gonna use it for. But whatever's gonna happen, that's gonna be a big area for them to put a lot of equipment.
Hmm.
And it's gonna change the whole complexion of what they're, what, what's happening down there. Now, do we want that? Can we do that in that area?
Well, you can't have a contractor shop out here or anything like that, but.
Yeah, but.
P and Z would have concerns with.
But they, they only allowed, they only allowed like eight cars, eight, ten cars.
Exactly. That's where I was trying.
Seventy by forty foot area, you could put fifty cars in there. And, you know, why are you building a fence that you may not be able to use at all?
Every time we don't cover our butt, Chris, we end up getting burnt. And I'm tired of it.
Why are you building a fence that you may, may not be able to use at all? Because planning and zoning is gonna say no.
And it came back and, and bit us.
Are you guys tonight, are you approving the size of the area or are you approving the height of the fence?
Right now, we're not approving it.
We're not approving anything right now.
What we're talking about, correct?
But we're, we're talking about it. I'm just saying, you know, even the fact that you wanna.
We're not here for the size, correct?
No, no, but the fact that you wanna put a fence in, okay, and close off the area, okay? If they're only allowing eight cars over there, what the hell are you fencing in? What are you fencing in? Goats? I mean, you know, really.
If we can, we'll put goats in there, as long as somebody's paying the rent.
I know, but I, I know what you're saying.
But the problem, but the problem is.
The point is, is that, that.
Comes back to us legally because now we approved it.
Once we do a, once we do a variance, it's there forever.
Right.
Exactly, but you're doing a variance for the height, not the size. If we go back to zoning after, okay, now we could do a six-foot fence, zoning is gonna tell us, all right, you could do a forty, you can't do a seventy.
Okay, but what's gonna happen when your guy comes in here for a variant, for, for a site location and we tell him, you've got a sixty by, or forty by seventy-two area there, well, you can only park five cars in there.
Because it's not about.
If he doesn't park five, if he parks six, then you take it in, whatever you guys.
He's not gonna be happy.
He's not gonna be happy. Then that's on us. He won't lease it from us, correct? I mean, that's, that's the way I see it. Our loss, I guess, we did it too, but again, I mean, it's, it's talking about.
No, because then it becomes a legal thing and then they start suing everybody in line that you guys a lot, and believing, we've seen this a thousand times with all the dealerships that we approve, uh, the owner leases it out and they put twenty cars and it's only cited for four. It was like, we have this big fence in the area. That's, that's the only.
Separate issue I see here.
No, it's not, that's, that's.
You guys are, that's, we're, it, it, it just goes down the line that like you guys wanna do a seventy-two by forty area. You guys wanna lease it out. You guys are business people. You guys are like, hey, uh, Joe Blow, rent this place out and you can open up a garage. He goes, uh, to get, uh, you know, a license from the DMV and the DMV is gonna tell him, hey, you have four bays, so four bays equals how many cars?
Uh, eight.
Eight cars. But in, in a seventy-two by forty area, eight cars really is only taking about an eighth of that area. And that guy's gonna be like, wait a second, I've got a seventy-two by forty area. I could put twenty cars in here.
By zoning, by zoning, right, anyway, there's not enough room on that property to park the amount of cars per amount of bays he has.
Cuz that's, uh, cuz DMV, especially in Berlin, it, it's parking per bays. And that's, and that's something that is a down-the-road thing. If you said like, listen, we're just gonna sell tomatoes over here, this is never gonna be anything more than that.
Can't do that, we can't change the use.
But what I'm just saying, though, is like, your, your goal is to put someone in there. It's a garage.
Okay, all right. Look at it. So let's look at it. It's, it's not a garage. I mean, it is, but we're not.
It is, cuz it's got bays.
Right, but we're not renting it out to another garage. They're not opening up a shop or anything. Nothing happening. I wanna fence it off. I wanna have my security dog in there. It's the only reason I wanna fence it off. Six-foot fence because the dog jumps over three-foot fences. Let's. He likes to run around, so we're maximizing it.
But you're not gonna be here for a hundred years, so when it, when you pass on, someone else buys the property, then they're like, I could put cars over here. Not for dogs to run around. That's.
I think the guy said a hundred years ago, when, when the building was built, we had different zoning. Now the zoning changed, now we're stuck with the new zoning. That's why we're here.
Well, there's, there's where our, there's where our problems lie, my friend.
We, I had the same issue along View Drive. The whole street is not performing and I had to do four variances for my house.
I've been through several things myself.
Yeah, so, uh, and again, I mean, the issue we're talking about here today is a six-foot fence or.
I would.
Not the size, correct?
Honestly, I would recommend, and this is my, my, I would recommend that we, uh, deny without prejudice. That way it doesn't tie your, anything up and we can bring it back.
So then you can go to zoning to get its site. Once zoning approves it and says, you could do this, then we could be like, yeah, put your fence up.
Try to help you figure this out.
They've got, they've gotta make the decision first.
And that way you're not gonna get caught up or lose any of your.
I mean, we went to zoning, they said, do this first, so.
Zoning said that?
That's why we're here.
Why?
We wanted the fence, so we applied for, you wanted to apply for a variance. Yeah, that's why we're here. But you could. The way, you'll have to go through both, so.
Wait, zoning saw this and they sent it?
No, no, that's just us, our staff.
Oh, oh, gotcha.
The town planner, we looked at it and they asked, they wanted to get a variance, 'cause we told them, it's restricted with the fence height. He wanted to go this route.
Well, I think you should go to planning and zoning commission. And the planning and zoning commission can go back and take a look at it and then they can decide.
Once they approved the site plan, they come to us and they'll be like, yeah, we've got it approved, we just need your approval to do a five foot, ten inch fence rather than a three foot, oh, well, they approved, okay, you're doing a sixty by thirty-seven, because that's all they approved it, okay, cool, so now.
Right, right now, right now, what's the use of this property right now?
There's no current use, but.
Yeah, but what, what, what use is, is available for, from a?
Motor vehicle use.
Motor vehicle use.
Same standard says, because that's a not conforming lot, so yeah.
But it's a motor vehicle use.
They couldn't do a, like a electrical contractor?
If they were to try something else, they would have to come here or change if not.
But right now, it's motor vehicle use, am I, am I correct? All right, so if it's motor vehicle use.
That's just repair, no sales.
I don't think it would be, be a problem changing something like that.
Yeah, it would just have to be.
Well, no, no, but my, my point is, is that the use right now is motor vehicle use.
Hmm.
Okay, so we have to go by what the use, intended use is, you can't just come back and say, I want a six foot fence. What, what do you want it for? You know, what, what, what's the property for? The property is motor vehicle use, I want to put a six foot fence, well, why do you want to put a six foot fence on a, on a lot that only allows eight cars to be parked there? You know, so planning and zoning commission should come back and say, well, this is what we should, this is what we should do. I, I mean, if we deny it without prejudice, we don't hurt them, okay? And then they go to planning and zoning and planning and zoning turns around and says, yeah, okay, we'll, we'll allow you to use this, this motor vehicle, okay? Because that was the intended use, that's the current, that was the past use, once they approve that, then they can come back and say, oh, we want to put a fence in to block off the cars or whatever we want to do, and then we can, we can judge on that.
I mean, the issue though is with, the reason why we told them to, to come for the variance first, is because of the hypothetical factor, you kind of can't consider as much on the planning and zoning side for site plans, if they have a site plan showing parking, anyone's allowed to put a fence up within the property. And because it's own residential, it's kind of, and not conforming, it has different standards, we held to, technically you could put a fence around the whole thing at three feet and it wouldn't be.
At three feet, we wouldn't be here.
Well, I mean, but even planning and zoning wouldn't have any grounds for denying that or them.
No, no, three feet.
As for me, so telling them to go first there, we didn't feel like that was as appropriate either, because they can kind of put a fence in it, as long as it doesn't impact site plan that's already been approved with the parking.
I guess, I guess the, the problem lies with, with the use of the property.
Hmm, and that's where in your sense, you can consider, you consider hardship, so you have to consider whatever.
Well, there's no hardship.
May or may not be, exactly.
Because you know as well as I do.
It's the hardship, it's, it's not conforming in itself, isn't that the hardship?
Not, not, I don't feel that's a hardship.
No, it's not a hardship, no.
So if today we wanted a three foot fence, it'd be no issue.
Yeah, it would just be planning.
Even the size, the seventy-two, whatever.
They just approved the site plan, yeah.
I don't think.
I don't know why we keep talking about the size of it, why is that coming up as a bigger issue than a six foot, five foot ten here tonight?
That seems to be the issue here, the size of it.
No, it's not the issue, the issue is the fact that the size of it is, is, yeah, that's part of the issue, because the intent here is this is motor vehicle. That, that's, that, that's the past use.
Only thing it could be, yeah.
Okay, so.
It's not the only thing it could be.
Well, no, it's.
It's what it is now.
It's what it is now.
You have to come before us again to change.
Correct, if we, if we.
It's what it is, it's what it is now, it's motor vehicle now, but the intent is, is if it's motor vehicle.
It could be changed.
Okay, and if there's only allowed eight cars, I, you know, I don't understand why you need.
If you had a plumber or electrical contractor or something like that wanted to come in there, it could be changed over to that, motor vehicle would be gone.
Understood.
They're made, just looking at the old.
Yeah.
Here, I think there were a total of sixteen spaces on the lot.
Yeah, but there were twelve or more for.
Well, fifteen, because of three, well, you had five bays. One, two, three, four.
Five bays.
One, two, three, four, five.
Five.
Five, so fifteen spaces were are for parking for the bay used for pairs.
Required parter.
And I think the only other spaces were for handicap.
Yeah.
And on the other side.
On the other side, the right side.
So then we're required, they had to have. And that's not a big property.
No.
But I don't think there's any issue with the size, the number one, there was no hardship mentioned, okay? I mean, if this was like, let's say for example, it, it, it's, it's, it was motor vehicle, it stays motor vehicle, and you turn around and you say, okay, we're gonna, we're gonna open up a, 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 a tire factory, okay, we're gonna have, we're gonna sell, you know, you need a seventy foot area to store tires, you know? Then, you know, the hardship is I can't store the tires in the building, okay, uh, and then there's other issues, then you come back and you say, this is what we're gonna do and we have a, we have a problem and we need a, we need a fence or whatever, I mean, that is something that, that can be, we just can't just go ahead and just say, okay, it's a six foot fence and there's no hardship, there's no, nothing listed, we're, we're gonna look like sitting ducks, we're gonna get in trouble.
We can have a fence.
You can have a fence, yeah.
You can have a fence.
A fence.
Yeah, you can have a fence.
Any size I want, all around the property.
No, just three feet max.
Three, correct, yes, I mean, you know, boundary wise, we can have a fence, so going back to what you just said, the eight vehicles or, you know, storing tires, whatnot, what's the difference if I do a six foot fence or a three foot fence? The size, boundary of it doesn't matter.
Well, there just may be requirements with screening, maybe for something like that.
Yeah.
Well, generally they're saying if you have to prove why you need over three feet.
For security.
For security of what?
My dog, you know, you know what I mean, like anything we put in there, I don't want it stolen, I know somebody can jump over a three.
The issue with that is hardships are, it can't be personal, financial.
Not personal, it's a commercial place, so that's.
Said for your dog and.
Dog and stuff.
That's personal, that's the thing.
Longs to the garage.
Technically, security is a personal thing, has to pertain to the lot itself or even a use.
Anything we put outside, let's say we have an air compressor that's gonna be outside of the building, because we don't want it, you know, going loud inside, we're gonna have it there, I'd rather have it fenced in, AC unit, whatever it is, I want it fenced in, especially on that road, I mean, again, we, we were already robbed and sure, we're not the only ones, I mean, I live just down the road on Longview, we got robbed, my car got up.
Like we were saying, hardship has to.
But that, that's our hardship, we want security.
Has to pertain just to you and not everyone, because everyone else could have the same problem. Everyone else probably does have the same problem, hardship has to pertain just to your lot, basically, and.
Because I want to protect the AC, the air compressor, whatever's there with the.
That's what I'm saying, those things are, are common mechanical pertinences for every property, yeah. You have to put it to your specific lot and use, why is it necessary for you alone, your specific scenario, not just hypothetical generic for everyone else?
That's why hardships are.
Just because I don't have the car there now.
Not even just for cars, just, that's what hardships are, we can look at the definition if you want, so you can see hardship means, because I've been through these various, it's a few times.
Yeah, but they're.
That's the biggest thing ever.
They're the biggest, they're, they're the biggest hardships are the biggest.
The hardest thing to think of, oh, yeah.
And when we, when we, when the, the town's attorney comes in here and starts talking to us about them.
You have to stake the hardship in your approval.
Yeah, we do, we have to literally state it in the approval, because if somebody comes back, say if we give it, for, for example, we give you the, the, the variance, then somebody in your neighborhood doesn't like it, all of a sudden, whether they're here or not.
Doesn't matter, they'll come back at you.
So I, I honestly, I think for, for, for now, I think that I without prejudice, and then we try to figure this out, maybe you're back here next month and we do this all over again and we try to figure this on out, but I think, I think for one month, I think that deny without prejudice saves you for now, keeps it, keeps everything rolling and it's only one month, you're not gonna put up a fence in the middle of winter anyway.
Uh, being what it is, the building right now, what it's zoned for and whatnot, what can we store outside?
Right now, nothing, you have.
I can't have anything outside.
You don't have any site plan approved for a use that requires storage out there, the only thing be for a motor vehicle use for the parking that's allotted.
So you're saying we could have parking.
Only for a motor vehicle use, so we sign a new payer shop to go in there.
No, right, right now, today, tonight.
Today you have nothing.
I can't park a car out there.
You don't have a license for a motor vehicle.
I know, like, I'll go there, I'll leave my car there.
I know, yeah, so technically.
And I leave it there overnight?
There before, I don't bother because it's just a one car that's been sitting there probably for more than five years, but generally, it shouldn't be anything there without the use.
So tonight I can't go park my car there outside.
You could park it inside.
Outside, I mean, we were talking.
Outside, then it becomes, it's a business.
Just so I know.
And then. Well, that's just terms that could be up to me in that case, if I wanted to enforcement action, but I'm not gonna give you a number to don't park this many or that many, it's just, I'm telling you, without a use there, you don't have any approval for storage outside of the lot, outside of the, um, building now, the lot.
So I can't park my car there tonight, leave it there overnight.
I'm telling you, the same thing I'm telling you, I'm not gonna give you a number of vehicle, you don't have approved use at the property, so I'm not gonna tell you.
Not, not asking you, I'm saying what.
Or ask to me, but I'm not gonna tell you, it's okay.
What does the paperwork say, can I leave my car there?
You need an approved use, use a lot of spaces that are.
So tonight as we stand here, I cannot go there and leave my car there overnight.
I, I don't know how else I can tell you, keep answering the question.
I'm just, is there a yes or a no, that's all it is.
Don't have an approved use, so you don't have any.
So I can't, you're saying no. Correct.
I mean, like, why do you?
That's, that's what I'm saying, like, we're, we're going home tonight, we have two cars, we want to leave it there and walk home.
Technically, you can't.
But I'm telling you. That's, that's.
I'm telling you can, without telling you enforcement action, that's what, because I make a termination, then it becomes an issue.
Well, if you tell me no, then, okay.
Tell you no, you don't have any approval.
Okay. There's no approval, is, but you don't answer the question. And I leave my car there, can we all drive there tonight and leave our cars there and walk home?
No.
No, that's the bottom line, no.
And hence why we've been going around in this circle is because it's, it's always the legality of it, rather than what you guys do, this is nothing against you guys. We want businesses in town, because the more businesses in town, the more money the town makes.
Oh, yeah, yeah, definitely.
But like at the same time, we're up here as commissioners because we have to do the legal part, you know, and doing the classes and stuff like that, because like we've got to follow the letter of the law.
We're here as volunteers too.
Yeah, I know.
Yeah, we don't get paid for this.
Trying to get to the bottom line and, and, you know, again, if we knew we had to go another route, we'd be at the other place, not here tonight, so.
Listen, I would love that spot to be something successful, because to me, it's an eyesore.
It's been an eyesore, now it's a lot better.
Well, no, I don't mean it from that, but it's just, it's an abandoned building at the end of the day, because there is nothing approved for it. And in order to do it all right, it should be an approved business. Yeah, but then they've got to go through the other channel, which is.
The other channel said come here first, so.
Well, no, the other channel is so it can be something, you gotta have.
Never went to the planning zoning commission. I explained why we're not the planning zoning commission, that's a separate commission, where we explained to you, we told you, we asked you all the questions, when you came to the office, what's the use you have there, you just said, oh, we want to put a dog, we want to apply for the variance, we can't stop someone from applying any application, so you want to do it as much as you want to, we have to take the application and where you present it.
We're zoning board of appeals, you should be going to zoning.
I mean, either way, you can do either process, there's really no, but if you want a variance, you wanted a variance, we told you, this is the process to try to get a variance.
Well, I think they should go, I, I think you should take us to ZBA, I mean, ZBA, the B, BZC, whatever the hell they call themselves, planning and zoning commission. And I, we deny without prejudice, so it doesn't cost them any more money if they can come back over here, that's, you know, I, I don't want them to be shelling out money for no, for no reason at all either. That's not right, so.
Regardless, they'll have to come back to you for, you have to explain a hardship, no matter what.
Well, yeah, but I mean, once they get the use of this thing, then maybe, they may have a hardship, I don't know if they do have a hardship or whatever, you know, our hardships, we, we have hardships and we, we approve a lot of applications, we approve, I mean, some days we get ten applications and we approve all ten and, you know, a lot of them have hardships that are, that are, they, they're stretched out, I mean, you know, uh, we have situations where you have, like you said, corner lot, okay? That's a particular one, if somebody got run over by a car, hit by a car, and they, they want a fence around their lot, and it's like, you know, you're gonna tell them, I.
Commercial property is a harder.
Commercial property is a little bit harder, yeah, but like I, I just said, but, you know, we do the best we can, uh, to try to help out, even if we have to stretch the hardships, but the point is, is that, that if you go back to planning and zoning, PCC, and you come back and you say, okay, this is what we're gonna do with this property, then at least they can come back to us and we can go back and, and, and filter it more, but.
Hardship can't be for monetary loss or any of that stuff like that, so we can't even consider, you can't, well, somebody stole something off my property. It really doesn't, it, unfortunately.
I know, the hardship thing is.
Doesn't come, it, it's not hardship for us, it's the way the, the ordinance are written and we don't write them, so it, it's, it's just not, so as I, as I stated and commissioner, uh, said, you know, I, I think the, the best thing to do is to, to do it with deny without prejudice and.
Okay.
We'll move on like that, that way it won't cost you anything else and we get you back and hopefully get your.
Take that.
Get your approval and move on from there.
Hmm, okay.
Some way, somehow.
All right.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Staff, any comment, any additional comments?
Oh, my God.
No comments.
Any comments, uh, public comments? Comments in opposition, comments in?
Favor.
In favor, no, no, I don't think we have anybody. All right, I'll, I'll make a motion to close the hearing on it.
I second it.
I have a motion made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
All right. Whole business. Uh, ZBA twenty twenty-five dash oh one, eight forty-one Berlin Turnpike map, ten dash four, block one fifty-eight, lot fourteen. Nick Gara, Eastern Ventura Ventures is requesting a sale of alcoholic beverages, location approval for on premises, restaurant liquor permit for Striker Sports Cafe per Berlin zoning regulation eleven B, property is located within a CCD one zone. I have a motion to approve this application.
I'll make a motion, we approve the application.
I second.
The motion made and seconded, any discussion?
Only, only that, uh, let's make sure we don't see them bands and karaoke and stuff slipping out onto the patio and hearing from your neighbors that, uh.
Will come after us.
Yeah. You keep it like that and I think you'll do well over there, uh, I, I know they have a, that, that establishment's done fairly well in the past when it was run correctly, uh, barring the last owner.
Oh, yeah.
No, sure, I'm serious, I've never, I've never been in there, but I know people, bands that are played in there. Smaller bands.
Okay.
You know.
The motion.
I have a motion made and seconded, all in favor? Aye.
Got me, Tony.
Okay, uh, ZBA twenty twenty-five dash oh two, fourteen oh six Chamberlain Highway map, four, nineteen four, block fifteen, lot fourteen A. Thomas Ostinsky Tops Garage LLC is requesting a variance to allow a five foot, ten inch fence to be installed within the front yard setback at the south side of the property and a four foot fence to be installed within a front yard setback at the north side of the property, where three feet is required, uh, is the maximum height for it and fence installed within a front yard setback in residential zones for Berlin zoning regulation four B seven, property is located within an R eighty-six zone, I'll make a motion to, um, deny without prejudice.
I will second that motion.
I have a motion made and seconded, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay. All set?
Good luck.
All the best there.
We have December minutes, uh, this is the, uh, smart feed or not smart feed, uh, bright feeds tech, bright feeds.
Hmm, oh, the special.
Special meeting.
We're here for that one, we're here for like seven hours.
Oh, we're here, actually.
I was here for a special, well, I had surgery, yes, I don't.
I mean, but everybody.
Frank Langer, Tubbs, uh, Mizada, uh, Michael, and, uh, there's four of us here, so we can approve these minutes if you, nobody has any trouble with them, I don't, I.
I'll second it.
I'll make a motion to approve, you will second it?
Yeah, I'll second it.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Now, uh, we also have elections.
I'll move the toy, phone, Frank Langer.
We, yeah, no, we, actually, I, I had a discussion with, uh, Mike Simonetta and, um, I, I don't know if we can do elections tonight or if we have to wait.
We have to wait until.
Till February?
March technically or February, yeah.
Okay, all right, but I, I was gonna recommend that Mike, uh.
Oh, really, okay.
Yeah, we always done in January, we only got four people, I was gonna recommend that Mike pick up the reins on this and, uh, you know, uh. Yeah, we always done in January. We only got four people. I was gonna recommend that Mike pick up the reins on this and uh, you know, uh.
You're gonna let him slide?
Well, he said he's been doing it for thirty eight years, so I feel bad.
Well, I just don't know what.